And this is gavel to gavel to WCVW TV's complete coverage of Richmond City Council. Good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first meeting of the month of October. Happy Columbus Day to all of you folks out there and for any of you of my Canadian friends, Happy Thanksgiving. This is their Thanksgiving Day north of the border and always coincides with our Columbus Day. So wherever you may be, whatever you may be doing, I hope you're having a good one. We've got, well, it starts off with 12 items on the consent agenda, no items on the regular agenda, there's going to be some changes made and we'll find out, even a change in the way the meeting's going to be run tonight, but we'll get to that in just a second. But right now, let's take a look at that consent agenda and go through an update on what will and will not be heard tonight. Starting off with item number one, this is ordinance 2011-159, amending the city code concerning the submission of proposals pursuant to the Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 to require that the review committee that reviews all such proposals include, and this has been changed now, it was originally a member of city council selected by the council, now it is a person selected by the city council to represent it. And that will go forward tonight on the consent agenda. Item number two, ordinance 2012-29, special use permit for 122 Tempsford Lane, this is authorize a lot split that will result in an additional lot, that's anything else being continued until our next meeting, which is October 22nd, so that will not be heard tonight. Item three, ordinance 2012-163, and this is, would be allowing the Beaufort Oaks Community Unit Plan, this would allow them additional residences for adult care use and to establish a number of permitted adult care residence dwelling units, this one will stay on consent agenda. Item four, ordinance 2012-165, a special use at 1517 West Carey Street for the purpose of a two-family detached dwelling upon certain terms and conditions, that stays on consent. Item number five, ordinance 2012-166, and this is declaring a public necessity to authorize by gift purchase condemnation otherwise with any condemnation of the manner prescribed by council. And this is the easements that we've been talking about for a while now, at 6001-6007 Hull Street Road, this is so they can realign Hull Street Road, Hay Road, and Derwent Road, this has now been continued again, this will be continued until the 22nd of October, our next meeting. Item number six, ordinance 2012-167, special use permit at 2551 Monument Avenue for the purpose of a parking area, that's been continued until November 12th. Item seven, and this is ordinance 2012-168, special use at 2501 Monument Avenue, this also being basically a companion paper, has been continued until November 12th, so that's four weeks. Now we get to item number eight, sounds very complicated, but I'll break it down for you. It's ordinance 2012-169, if I read the whole thing through, it's to amend and reordain, da-da-da-da, special use of properties known as 7 through 13 West Franklin Street, 4 through 14 West Main Street, and 101 West Franklin Street as a parking area and hotel with accessory uses for the purpose of authorizing outdoor dining areas upon certain terms and conditions. What this basically is, is the Jefferson Hotel adding two outdoor dining patios, so that's what this one was all about. This stays on consent agenda, I doubt we'll have any opposition to that. Item number nine, ordinance 2012-173, special use at 1322 West Broad Street for a multifamily dwelling with up to 19 dwelling units, this is a warehouse and they're going to put dwelling units in there, and that stays on consent agenda. Item 10, ordinance 2012-177, this transfers 2 million, roughly 2.6 million and 396,000 from the fiscal years 2012, 2013, and this would transfer funds to the Boulevard Redevelopment Preparation Project, this is being continued until the 22nd of October. Item 11, ordinance 2012-178, and this is amending the fiscal year capital budget by transferring and appropriating a half and one and a half million dollars from the school planning and construction project in the education categories to the school's ADA compliance project in the education category, that stays on consent agenda. And also, number 12, ordinance 2012-179, this authorizes the chief administrative officer to accept $785,000 from VDOT to appropriate the increase to the capital budget by increasing estimated revenues and amount appropriated to the Department of Public Works Safety Improvements Projects. And that's for the purpose of constructing a roundabout at Brooklyn Park Boulevard, Dill Avenue, Second Avenue, and Meadow Bridge Road, that stays on the consent agenda as well. So we start out with 12 items on consent agenda, four are being continued, so we're down to just eight items on the consent agenda. Now, on citizens' comment period, we've got six people signed up to speak tonight, we have Melvin Jones to speak on the retirement system, Theodore Param to speak on Eastern Highland Park, John Ellis on Need For Meeting Place, Tracy Aziz on community concerns, Pamela Smith Simmons Neighborhood Watch to talk about crime in the neighborhood, and Albertina Carter to talk about crime in the Blackwell community. Those are the people signed up tonight for citizens' comment period. We really don't have, there is an award and presentation, but it has been made at a different place at a different time, but, and so there will not be awards and presentations tonight, but this award went out to the Southside Baptist Ministries, yesterday was their 25th anniversary. It's to recognize, honor, and celebrate and bestow the Richmond Official Recognition Award on Southside Baptist Ministries on the occasion of their 25th anniversary and brings us the attention of the entire community. So that is what is happening and what is not happening tonight. Now, slight change in the order of business tonight, it'll still start with the invocation, then the pledge of allegiance, and the roll call, the chamber evacuation plan, then there will be no, there are no appointments or reappointments on the docket for tonight, so there'll be nothing there. There are no awards and presentations to be made tonight, so that will go by the wayside. Then we will get to the agenda review and amendments, but then, instead of going to regular agenda, because there is nothing on the regular agenda, they're going to switch around and then go to the consent agenda, and then the citizens' comment period, and then back to normal, the approval of minutes of previous meetings, reports from council and the new legislation introductions. So that's the way the changes are tonight, so eight items left on the consent agenda, nothing on the regular agenda, no awards and presentations, and we'll have no appointments and reappointments, and we'll have the citizens' comment period preceded by the consent agenda. And that's the outline of the meeting for tonight, so at first glance you'll say, gee, this might be a fast one, well, it might be, it might not be, we never know until we get done here tonight how long it'll be taking, so we'll be finding out when we get started in just about a little over five minutes from now with tonight's Richmond City Council meeting. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
All right, at this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We will now stand and the invocation will be given by the Reverend Clifford Chamberlain, and that will be filed by the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
Return, O God, our Father, we pray now that Thou would bless this meeting, guide the hearts and minds of those making decisions, and give unto those who will bring matters before this body the insight that is needed, that our city will come together, expand creative initiatives to collaborate with community, to provide what is needed to carry this great city to a higher tier. We give Thee thanks for this privilege to serve in public life and the privilege to be public participants. Bless us now in God's hearts and minds, in the spirit of unity and peace and a tranquility that only Thou can give unto our hearts and minds. This we ask of Thee in appreciation, in Thy name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please read the chamber emergency evacuation plan?
Counsel, evacuation announcement, upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chambers, or the east or west stairwell outside the rear doors of the chambers. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot boarded by Clay, Eighth, and Ninth Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, for the record, all members of council and attendants this evening.
And thank you for that, and at this time, since we have no awards and no appointments or reappointments, may we please have an agenda review and amendments?
Consent agenda items consist of items, number one, ordinance number 2011-159, to amend city code concerning the submission of proposals pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructures Act of 2002 to require that the review committee that reviews all such proposals include a person selected by the city council to represent it. Item number three, ordinance number 2012-163, to amend and reordain ordinance 80206081 concerning the Bill Beaufort Oaks Community Unit Plan, to amend the permitted uses to include an adult care residence use and to establish a number of permitted adult care residence dwelling units. Item number four, ordinance number 2012-165, to authorize a special use of a property known as 1517 West Carey Street for the purpose of a two-family detached dwelling upon certain terms and conditions. Item number eight, ordinance number 2012-169, to amend and reordain ordinance number 931125, which authorizes special use of properties known as 7 through 13 West Franklin Street, 4 through 14 West Main Street, and 101 West Franklin Street as a parking area and a hotel with accessory uses. Item number nine, ordinance number 2012-173, to authorize a special use of the property known as 1322 West Broad Street for the purposes of a multifamily dwelling with 19 units and uses permitted for the B6 mixed-use business district. Item number 11, ordinance number 2012-178, to amend ordinance number 20123470 by amending the fiscal year 2012-2013 capital budget by transferring and appropriating funds in the amount of $1,500,000 from the school's planning and construction project in the education category to the school's ADA compliance project, also amending the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2012-2013 and for the four fiscal years thereafter by transferring $2,700,000 from the school's ADA compliance project. Item number 12, ordinance number 2012-179, to authorize the CAO to accept $785,000 from VDOT and to appropriate the increase to the fiscal year 2012-2013 capital budget by increasing estimated revenues and the amount appropriated to the Department of Public Works for the purpose of constructing a roundabout at the intersection of Brooklyn Park Boulevard, Dill Avenue, Second Avenue, and Meadow Brook Road. That concludes our consent agenda for the evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, is there anybody to speak in favor of any of the papers that are on the consent agenda? Anyone to speak in opposition?
My name is Chris Dorsey. I am going to speak against everything, as usual, this illegitimate body does, and in particular, I want to talk about the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 and the hard-to-believe irony of what the Public Private Education Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 does. That's where the money that comes to build this gigantic monstrosity of a new jail, which probably shouldn't even open up because this city can't lawfully incarcerate people because people keep dying as a result of the Eighth Amendment of this document, which is the law of the land, the US Constitution. However, it's just kind of Orwellian doublespeak, public-private, which is it, Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act, well, we know that moral school is opened and ready for business for children with pre-existing health conditions despite being toxic to anyone, and meanwhile, that the Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act goes to locking people up. It's ridiculous, assume that whatever this body tells you, the opposite is true, and you'll start picking up on how the government operates. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Back to council for discussion. Call the question, please, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel is voting on tonight's consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert.
Aye.
Vice President Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Jewell.
Aye.
Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Ms. Trammell.
Aye.
Mr. Tyler.
Aye.
President Graziano.
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, would you please review the list of amendments to tonight's agenda?
The amendments to tonight's agenda includes item number two, ordinance number 2012-29, to authorize a special use of 122 Tempsford Lane for the purpose of authorizing a split, a lot split that would result in an additional lot to be served by private access easement that's continued until...
as continued until October the 22nd. Item number six, ordinance number 2012-167, to authorize the special use of 2551 Monument Avenue for the purpose of parking, of a parking area to serve events occurring on 2501 Monument Avenue. That's continued until November the 12th. Item number seven, ordinance number 2012-168, to amend the ordinance which authorized the special use of 2501 Monument Avenue to authorize the expansion of the number and type of permit event, permitted events upon certain terms and conditions as continued until November the 12th. Item number 10, ordinance number 2012-177, to transfer funds in the amount of $2,651,986 from fiscal year 2012-13 general fund budget and $396,000 from fiscal year 2012-13 Department of Public Utilities Stores internal service fund budgets, and to amend fiscal year 2012-13 capital budget by appropriating such transferred funds to the Boulevard redevelopment preparation project in the economic and community development category for the purpose of relocating city departments from locations owned by the city along the Boulevard to a location that the city plans to acquire at 1638, 1650, and 1700 Commerce Road as continued until October the 22nd. Those are the amendments to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Does any member of council have additional amendments to tonight's agenda? Need a motion to amend?
Yes. Mr. Tyler?
So moved.
Thank you. We're now voting on tonight's agenda amendments. Mr. Connors?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Madam Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Madam President Graziano?
Aye. Thank you.
Agenda is before you.
Thank you, and I believe we have no papers. Do we have any papers to amend and continue this evening?
Madam President, there are no papers to be amended and continued this evening.
Right, at this time, we'll go to the citizen comment period. And when I looked at the list of speakers, I noted that two of the people who are signed up to speak are candidates for office, so I would just remind those people that this is citizen comment time, and I would ask that they be respectful and not refer to campaign comments during their comment time. Thank you.
The first speaker tonight is Melvin Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Melvin Jones. I would hope that everybody on city council would turn off their cell phones and Blackberries and computers and listen to this for a second. We've got a problem with the retirement system. The reason why I came before city council is because city council elects the people that's on the trustee department. I've got a letter here that was sent from the city attorney's office. Back in 2003, I injured my back. It's got on here, Melvin S. Jones Jr. versus the city of Richmond. And it's a response that one of the doctors did on a recommendation on my back, which was a lie, and I've got to have surgery on my back. And it's got down here, I'll read it to you. It says, "Do you agree or disagree with the attached report from Dr. Ramsey dated December the 8th, 2009?" And it's got, "Agree or disagree." The doctor got down here, "Disagree." I disagree with his recommendations and find that, well, if I can't read his writing, but, you know, this is something gold seal sent by the city attorney's office. I've been reading this state law book. I know about all this law, but I've been screwed down here. I haven't been receiving my disability retirement from the city, and I'm eligible for it. So, you know, and then on top of that, now the city's a work much comp, they don't change medical people. People can't get their medicine. I've talked to somebody today that having a problem getting their medicine. You know, you got to go through red tape, and then they send you cards in the mail. I've got cards in the mail to go, I think it's, whatever the name of the pharmacy company is, that you can go get your medicine. You go to the pharmacy to get your medicine, and they say, "Well, it can't go through, Mr. Jones." I mean, what you got to do? And on top of that, I did all the jobs I had to do. And my thing is, if the federal government can grant me my disability, why in the hell can't the city give me my money? So, you know, I'm like this, if you can't give me my money, everything that's been done, and even I went to the retirement department, they told me what I'm eligible to get. Can't get that. You know, I don't want to have to go across the street to the federal court because I've got a whole lot, you know, and I went through a whole lot of hell down here. I stopped this building from being blown up one time because some vendor put diesel fuel in the wrong place at the city that's supposed to fill up a reserve tank. So, I mean, I feel like I did my job down here, and I damn well should be able to get what was due to me without going through all this hell down here. You know, I mean, like Mr. Hatch just said, being black in a city, you know, it's really rough, and I think something needs to be done because like now, I need to have surgery on my back, and I can't get it done because of the whole up with the insurance company. So, I strongly urge city council to look at the trustee department, please, because they're not going by the rules. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, Jennifer Wicker is over here, and she's from the mayor's office. You might want to talk to her. Thank you.
The next speaker is Teddy Palm. The next speaker is John Ellis.
Madam President, city council, ladies and gentlemen, I represent the Oak Grove Neighborhood Watch, and we're having a lot of problems getting things done through the city. I've called the mayor on numerous occasions with no response whatsoever. I've had jobs taken out that I've called in for bulk trash pickup, cleanup, because we're trying to clean our neighborhood up to make it a cleaner, safer place for all of us to live, where we can actually see the houses next door to us, in front of us, and behind us. This all started back in April at a meeting that I attended with my city council, Lady Riva Trammell. And she swayed me into doing this, and she's been a tremendous help to our neighborhood. She's helped every way. Without her, we wouldn't have one because I didn't even know what to do. So, I called the police department. With their help, and especially Riva's help, we got one started. I've got over 80 members now and a possible 400, which is a good percentage. Nobody thought I would get it done. They told me I had a target on my chest. I live in the Oak Grove area, and that's where a lot of crime is. And we have stopped a lot of the breaking and entering simply by cleaning up our neighborhood and working together as friends and neighbors. I don't like to call them neighbors. I like to call them my friends and neighbors. And I think if the whole city could start a program like this, we wouldn't have the crime that we're having. I really believe that. That's all I need to say, and thank you for your time. And I'd like to especially thank Riva Trammell. Go down to her help, we wouldn't have as many people in the Neighborhood Watch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. And I want to thank you, I know Riva probably wants to say something, but I want to thank you and everybody like you who work so hard to improve their neighborhoods and make them safe places to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And John? John? Come back up here. I'd like to thank you for taking all your time that you take, your truck, your car, your gas money. I mean, you don't get paid a penny for what you do, not a penny. I mean, and gas is expensive for you to ride around, ride around, passing through flyers that you have made up yourself, making phone calls, telling the people to come to your meetings, and then listening to them. Also, you come to our 8th district meeting and fill out sheets like this from some of your neighbors, and we enter them in the system, and I send them back to you to let you know that we did enter them in the system. And I think that it's a shame that our tickets are being cleared when the things are not being taken care of, and it's pretty bad when all you ask for is like to have an alley cleaned, or the streets cleaned, or a trash can. A trash can at the bus stops, a trash cans on the corner. And it's not my fault, and it's not your fault, and it's not your neighbors that people come in, they take the trash cans. I don't know what they do with them, but they're disappearing all over. I know Ms. Mallory and I, we have been speaking about this, and hopefully, we can come up with something where people just won't decide to come in their neighborhood and just steal our trash cans.
Well, something about the trash can issue. They're taking that and selling it for scrap to get money, okay? We all know that because it's metal.
And Mr. Ellis, thank you.
Kathy, he lives in my district?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, but these are issues that we're having in the district, all over the city. John, you are so right. They do take that, and also, they take them and use them for decorative pieces in front of their homes to collect trash, you know, like cans and stuff like that. But I just wanted to say thank you for you taking your time, not one day a week, but every single day. And I know every day you and I talk, you know, maybe two or three times a day about what you're going to do in this neighborhood, and it's just not Joplin, it's Keswick, it's Harwood. And everybody knows John by the little red truck with the Neighborhood Watch.
The little white man with the red truck. That's what they call me in my neighborhood. The little white man.
And the little red.
But...
Thank you very much, Mr. Ellis. We appreciate it.
It's been my pleasure to work for my neighborhood and friends.
Thank you. We need more citizens like you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tracy Aziz.
Aziz. All right. Good evening, members of council. Y'all seen me over a long time. 1996, I started working with a lot of y'all. Our vice president, Riva Trammell, Marty Jewell, Cynthia Newble. I've worked with all of y'all to try to make sure that we have a city that can make me remember after 50 years that this was the place that I was born in, a nice place to live. However, in the last few months, in the last few years, it has not been a nice place to live. It's been a very scary place to live. My girlfriend, that's going to come behind me, witnessed a young man take his last three breaths just this past month. That's a real bad thing to have to think of when you go to bed at night. I don't know what the rules are. I don't remember on passing stuff out to council, but this is an abstract of some information I pulled. I know recently, the mayor went to Atlanta. He saw some beautiful projects that were, a project that was public housing and is now mixed housing like Blackwell. All fine and dandy. I know that there's money that's been allotted to be able to turn down the rest of the existing public housing and move that to what he saw in Atlanta. But the first thing they did in Atlanta was stand by the creed that they have for that city. I say is that together we'll build a better Richmond with world-class education, fiscal responsibility, healthcare, economic development, inclusive neighborhood plans and initiatives, and the creation of safe and secure neighborhoods. Now, I would challenge each one of y'all to look at this mission. It's right on our page, our city page, because it's kind of backwards. Because the first thing that we need to do to make all these other things happen is to make it safe. You cannot build $500 million projects when they've got people murdering each other in the area, this is specific area that you're talking about, building and taking all this money to use for those type of projects when you don't have it safe. So, what I'm hearing is that this city is going to take millions of dollars and put it on Jeff Davis Highway. We can't get trash cans, we can't get cleanups, we definitely can't get the police to come out and do their best job. How do I know this? Because I too study these abstracts. I look at these other cities. I look at Newark, New Jersey, a city that had, let's see, here, this is coming from Fannie Mae, 2,735 violent crimes per 100,000 people. They reduced it to, reduced it by 75% by 2002 by including... And I'm going to take maybe a second more. By including an initiative sponsored through Rutgers that helped the communities come up with an initiative of community members like me, not people appointed by the mayor, people like me that are affected. So, what I want to walk away from here today from y'all is the commitment that for Southside and for East End, we will come up with those groups of people, people that are affected, that can sit and talk to the mayor and to the council people and anyone else to let them know what's really going on. And then I expect that, when we do that, you're going to come back and really follow up on what we said. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tracy.
Ma'am.
Tracy.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you because I have all of these emails, these emails from way back where you have been begging and...
Almost a year.
All of these emails, the sheets that they filled out, and I think you got a reply back from me where we put them in the impact team, and they're working on them. Don't know how long it's going to be because some of the tickets, as I said earlier, are being cleared, and what they do, they come out there, look at it, and they clear the ticket, never touch it. And that's something that Mr. Marshall, I know Mr. Marshall's working on it, but, you know, he doesn't know unless we tell him, and who knows best than the people that live in that neighborhood, as you and I have discussed this. Why have a mayor's impact team when they don't live in there?
It's not doing a bit of good, guys.
I don't see no shootings going on in Brookberry, and if it is a shooting, you've got, what, 50 police officers 24/7 around the clock? Not over there in Blackwell, Jefferson Davis had a shooting, what, a week ago behind my house?
In the alley behind where the young man died, three murders in two years. One alley, one alley, guys. Three murders, two years. There's a problem, and the problem has to be addressed, it has to be addressed by people like me.
And that's, you made an excellent point, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. But I don't want to go away from here, Madam President, with an excellent idea, or you turning your face that way and making faces like this is not affecting you because it is going to affect you.
It affects whatever affects, any neighborhood in the city affects you.
And I want you to stand by that because you can make us, help us make a difference.
I am not going to get into one on one with you.
Doesn't matter. You turned your face that way when I said what I had to say. So, that shows a level of not paying attention.
Thank you very much.
And Tracy?
No, I'm not thanking you for that. I'm scalding you for that.
You could scald me, but your time is up, so thank you.
Tracy, Tracy, come here. I want to say thank you because you have worked with the captain, Civil Elamine, at First Precinct. She was over there on September the 26th when we had the shooting and a person was killed. She was there with us, with Major Steve Drew, with all the other officers. You worked with them, you and Pam, and some of the other neighbors that come out from your homes, not standing behind the closed doors, sitting there saying, "I'm not going to get involved." You got involved. You gave the police a lot of information that they have been able to solve some of the issues over there. Now, we have every, I think, all kinds of agencies over there in Oak Grove, Blackwell, Hillside, right now, working together, many, many agencies. And no, crime is not going to go up, the murder rate's not going to go up because of people like all of us sticking together, coming together. We resent that statement from Mr. Mayor saying that the murder rate's going to go up. No, it's not going to go up because we're going to see that it doesn't. No, it's not going to go up because we're going to see that it doesn't because we're the ones that live there. We're going to take back our neighborhoods.
That's true.
And that's with Neighborhood Watch and all of that. Thank you, Tracy.
The next speaker is Pamela Smith Simmons.
Well, I don't know what to say after that, but Madam President and City Council, I'm here to talk to you about the recent murder last week.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself just for the record?
My name is Pamela Smith Simmons. I'm here to talk to all of you about the recent murder that took place right behind my back gate last week. It has affected me mentally and physically. The same alleyway that we have been complaining about for two years. And in that two-year span, there has been three murders in that same alleyway. No, we're not asking for $300,000 alleyway. We're asking for our alleyway to be clean, for the debris to get cut from the wires, for more lighting, and for to cite the owners who are not doing their jobs to keep the alleys clean. So after the third murder, we made a lot of calls. We have been making calls for two years now. They're all documented. Every department, code enforcement, CAPS, every entity that you can think of has documentation in the city. You can look at it, it's there. We did have the mayor to come out. The mayor did finally come out, which is very funny to me because an hour and a half... It wasn't funny that he came out, I was happy that he did come out. But an hour and a half before he came out, this is when the process began, the cutting of the trees from the wires, the cleaning of the alleyways. After two years of putting in invoices and sending everything that you can pull up, you'll see it. And it's been a two-year span. And I told the mayor, I said, "It's good that you came out," and he seen firsthand what we were talking about. But I did tell him then that it took you to come out, hour and a half before you came here, for them to start doing what we asked to be done two years ago. You know, when you have bright lights in alleyway at night, clean alleyways, clear views, that starts a lot of criminal activity at night. Starts a lot of drug dealing, starts a lot of prostitution, and many... Already 30 seconds. Okay, and what I really wanted to say is that there's something wrong with this system, with the police all together to me because I think the CAPS, I think the CAPS and the police, the citizens, and code enforcement should work together to resolve these problems. I remember when that was being done, when Chief Monroe was here and John Dixon was in charge of CAPS. We had code enforcers, police, citizens, CAPS all working together. We were then able to close down in my neighborhood, which is Blackwell, three houses, have them rehabbed, and now we have three new homeowners. We have two homeowners, new homeowners in these new houses that recently left because of the crime.
Thank you.
So this needs to be looked at. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to take up too much more of your time, but to me, when you have a police chief who has applied for four positions in other cities, that tells me that he's not interested in Richmond any longer. That needs to be looked into. Thank you very much.
Pam.
God bless all of you.
Pam, I want to thank you for, you and Tracy, starting the Neighborhood Watch over there on Chicago Avenue because I know there's not a Blackwell Civic Association, and you all have took it upon yourselves to have the Neighborhood Watch. That's some of the ones that we have started. Natalie?
And I want to thank you. I'm not going to take much of your time. I want to thank you, and sometimes you do have to go against the grain, and I respect you for that because you truly care about the people in your neighborhood, and that's why you continuously get voted in.
Thank you very much.
And also, Pam, we need to have a mayor that supports our police chief, that says our chief is doing a great job with the community. It's called community policing. You've got to keep that going, too. Not for someone not to answer a question when a reporter asks him, "Do you think chief is doing a good job?" The chief, those officers are doing a great job out there because they know that, hey, they need to work with us, and they do work with us.
Yeah, excuse me, ma'am, your time...
The police are doing great.
Excuse me, ma'am.
But remember what I said.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down, and thank you for what you do for your community. We appreciate it.
Well, we're going to keep supporting him.
For other states.
Thank you.
So that tells me something.
Good evening, members of City Council, President Graziano and Vice President Robertson. My name is Albertina Carter, and I reside in the eighth district. Councilwoman Riva Trammell is my council representative. I come before you this evening to speak about the escalation of crime in the Oak Grove and Blackwell areas of the eighth district. I spent 26 years with the Richmond Police Department and retired five years ago as a police captain. I worked assignments in uniform patrol during the times when Richmond was seeing 100-plus murders per year and when Richmond was dubbed "the murder capital of the South." I worked most of the public housing communities where the murders were occurring and witnessed firsthand the harsh emotional impact that those crimes were having on our children and young people. Today, as I talk with residents of my district about the recent murders, I again am witnessing how these murders are negatively impacting them and the lives of their children. All too often, our children are seeing the yellow police tape in their neighborhoods, those tapes that indicate that a murder or some other serious crime has occurred. Yet, we expect our children to be normal. We expect them to excel in school and to pass SOLs. That's not normal. It is not normal. Our children are supposed to grow up in neighborhoods that are vibrant neighborhoods, not in those types of environments. I implore you, and specifically the mayor, to work with Chief Norwood and others to develop a comprehensive plan to address the upswing in murders in our community. Last week, I met with Chief Norwood about this very issue, and I know that he has already planned initiatives that I believe will be beneficial to the residents of Oak Grove and Blackwell. One of his initiatives, and he's given me permission to talk about it, involves an actual visit by him and his entire command staff, which is 30-strong, to the communities of Oak Grove and Blackwell. He, not just the patrol officers, but he and members of his command staff will knock on doors, talk with neighbors to ensure that all of their concerns, not police concerns, but their concerns are being addressed. In closing, I ask that you not take a defeatist mindset by, and I quote, "expecting more murders to occur," end of quote, but that you instead be proactive and develop good strategies to combat crime in our communities. Our children are suffering. They deserve better, and we need to do whatever we can to help them. Thank you, and I appreciate your time and your attention.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down tonight.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Abbottina, I want to thank you for your comments tonight. And as you said, every neighborhood deserves clean, safe neighborhoods. Every neighborhood. It doesn't matter if it's Blackwell, Oak Grove, Jefferson Davis, Harwood, Hillside, Bell Mead, it doesn't matter where it is, Brookbury, Adams Park, Woodstock, Maguire, it means everywhere. Old Midlothian Turnpike, let's not forget them. Let's not forget Southside Plaza, Brandon Road, all up in there. Everybody deserves, and those children, they have to go to school, they live in some of the areas, they have to listen to the gunshots, listen to the loud music 2:00 AM in the morning. Then we expect them to get up in the morning, go to school, and be fresh. That can't happen. And as the chief has said, we're going to take back our neighborhoods. We're going to continue to work together for more Neighborhood Watches and be neighbors and friends together. Everybody in this room, from Rosa Jones, Oak Grove Civic Association, to Marie Hart, the Dearborn Civic Association, Tracy, Pam, all of you, John Ellis, even you that get involved. Way back when I first started having our eighth district meeting, you were coming there asking and listening to the children and listening to the parents with different issues that they had. So I want to thank you for what you said, and I want to thank you for having the meeting with the chief. And we're not going to let murder rates go back up to 160. That's not going to happen. We're taking back our eighth district and our city of the Richmond. The mayor don't want to, so be it, but we're going to with our police chief. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your support in our community.
Thank you.
You, Abbottina. Marty's got something.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jewell.
Ms. Carter, those persons who are perpetrating these crimes and who are victims almost always typically live somewhere nearby. So those victims are kin to somebody.
Yes.
And my question is, are you aware of any effort of having grief counselors come over and talk with those children, talk with those families? Counseling is hugely important when this kind of trauma occurs. And it does have an impact, even if it's an extended relationship with a child.
That's exactly right.
A friend in the neighborhood, somebody identified as somebody that belongs to that neighborhood, it impacts children. Have you ever seen anybody providing counseling over there in Oak Grove and Blackwell?
I have not. I guess Pam or Tracy.
We did have grief counselors come out from the city offices.
Excuse me, wait a minute. We're not going to have a... Mr. Jewell, I think you could ask that question off. It's like an into an audience.
I think it's important on the record because I'm not aware of it.
Did you see the last murder yet?
Excuse me, we're not going to have, we're not going to have a back and forth between the audience. Excuse, we're not going to have it. It's that we have certain rules in council, we respect the public, and we expect the public to respect our rules.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell.
There's no rule to killing.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Those of all of tonight's speakers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I think the common theme that I heard from the speakers tonight was that they're ready to take responsibility for their own neighborhoods, that this is going to be a bottom-up movement. And I think to the extent that we can support that at City Hall, we must. And we did have a mechanism for that under the Teams process. I'd like to see us bring that back because I think it is not a top-down approach, it's a bottom-up approach. I think that straight strengthens our neighborhoods relative to what Mr. Jewell said when there was a murder in my district last year, excuse me, earlier this year, I went with some police officers as well as some so-called second responders and walked door to door within that neighborhood, spoke with the people, asked them if they wanted counseling services, if they had children living in their home. There's organizations out there, I believe Mr. Tyler's on the board of one of them, that deal with this issue of children who are witness to or affected by violent crime. So there is a group out there. I appreciate you bringing up the issue because it is extremely important. And, you know, a few years ago, we turned around this stuff when people decided that they weren't going to hide behind their curtains anymore, that they were going to go out and report crime. And we have a high closure rate. I think the message still is if you commit a crime in the city of Richmond, more than likely, you're going to get caught. But we've got to have those eyes and ears out there, and the minute that people don't or decide that they aren't going to do that, it's going to be a reversal of what we've had. So thank you for bringing that up. Thank you for coming to speak to us. And I know sometimes it's a little messy, but asking the people to come forward and us doing, listening to them and then reflecting the change that they want, that's not nice and orderly necessarily. It's not a top-down approach, but it's the one that's effective, and I implore us to use that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. And I want to thank the citizens that came down here. I think that everyone in the city feels the pain and compassion for your neighborhood and what you've been through. And I know Mr. Beshler is here to speak to what the city has done. But I want to thank one more time the citizens that came down here and the citizens that work so hard to keep their neighborhoods safe. We do appreciate it, and I know your neighbors appreciate it also. Mr. Beshler, you have, can you tell us what's going on?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. My name is Chris Beshler. I'm the deputy chief administrative officer. What I'd like to do is to communicate to the residents of this community because of the loss of life certainly is unbelievably tragic, and to City Council what work has gone on in the recent weeks. And I have some, a visual for members of council and anybody in the public that would
Do we have copies of those for citizens, too?
I have 28 copies that I brought with me, but I can get as many as you would like.
Okay.
What this map illustrates is work that's being done currently by three different departments. Department of Public Utilities is the one I'll start with. Nearly every street light in the area has been upgraded from 150 watts to 250 watts. And the foliage and the trees around those lights have been trimmed, obviously, so that the alleys will be much brighter. In addition to that, four additional lights that previously were not in these alleyways have been set. With respect to the Department of Public Works, they've been out, and they have been doing vegetation trimming to get the alleys clear so that, again, when the brighter lights were installed, we want to make sure that that light is dispersed through the alleys so that it does light up the alley. And also, I have information from our code enforcement. They've been out, and they've issued 36 violations for property maintenance. And what that means is this is overgrown grass, trees that are growing into the alleyways that are blocking the lighting, and basic property maintenance issues. And they've also issued seven violations with respect to structural issues. Many of these seven violations most likely will require the building to be demolished. So again, I did want to close by saying that this is very tragic, but we are putting resources to help improve the safety of that area.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Trammell.
Ellen, did you have something? Did you want, did you have something? Chris, we appreciate what you're doing. We appreciate you and Mr. Marshall 100%, seriously. It's, the problem is, the frustration is, is when we get these sheets and we enter them in the system... them in the system, and it takes months, I mean, you've even heard him say, years, to get the streetlights fixed, to get the alleys cleaned. They're seniors, they can't clean those alleys. Over there on Wamsley Boulevard, Maguire, they can't, those seniors can't get out there and cut those ditches, they're going to get hit by cars. They're going 60 to 70 miles an hour over there. And that's why, you know, when you walk on Wamsley Boulevard, it's this much, it's this much of a road to walk on. You have a ditch that drops off here, you have weeds that are here, you have the lighting that's not bright. That, that, that's what people are, are giving to me, that I enter them in the system. I can't tell, and neither can none of us up here, telling city employees where to go or how to do their, their job or what to do. We can request on these sheets, and thank God, some of them do get done, but when you, they wait months and, and weeks and years for it not to get done. Here it is, they, they've signed petitions, Pebble Court, Floral Avenue, Bed Rock, Evergreen, to have streetlights over there. Petitions got signed, and as of today, they're telling me, nothing's been done. The trees haven't been cut away from the lights, the lights have not been done. That, they don't want, they're seniors over there, they don't want to see the same thing in that area off of Woodstock, in that area off of Broad Rock, that's happening right now in some of the other areas. And they come out and they report things, and they, they tell us what's going on. But they said this would not happen over there in Adams Park or in Brookbury, but it's happening over here. These are beautiful homes too. These are, these are people that pay their taxes. They want the same, they want the same thing for their neighborhoods as other places in the Eighth or in, in other parts of the city, just like they want it, I want it. I live off of Jefferson Davis, 54 years, 2709 H A D E N Avenue, that's where I live. This, this is the frustrations we feel, and it's not fair to me, and it's not fair to them. As I said, we love you, we love Mr. Marshall, y'all are doing, it's something else that's breaking down. And also, people need to realize that when we cut our budget, we didn't, we're not hiring people out there. We need more people on the street, that's what I hear every day. We need more workers out here, more people to cut the trees, more people to fix the lights, more people to clean our alleys. Why should we clean the alleys? We're taxpayers, we are elderly, we can't do it, we're in wheelchairs, and we get written up, like the guy on Wamsley got written up. He's in a wheelchair. He can't cut that alley, I mean, that, that ditch over there, they're killing. That's what we're saying, we are, we are disgusted. We're, we're upset, we're mad, when these things are not being taken care of until we have something that they have to come down here, take their time, and say, what's going on here? What do we do, Chris? What do we do, Mr. Marshall?
Councilmember, you, you raise a bunch of valid points. One of the things you pointed out is that we have cut the budget. So when we cut Public Works budget, it takes longer for them to respond. But if you would give me those documents that you say have been entered, we'll get them resolved. In the last year, we've taken several tens of thousands of requests and gotten more than 90% of them completed within about 10 days. So I'm not sure which requests these are. If they fall outside of the eight primary requests we focus on with See, Click, Fix, then maybe there's, maybe they're more longer-term issues. Replacing streetlights is not actually one of those items, but if you tell me where the streetlights need to be replaced, we'll get DPU, or, in some cases it's not DPU, it's Dominion, to work on trying to get those streetlights addressed, or cutting back the vegetation. So if you give me the list, we'll try to get them taken care of now.
Mr. Marshall, we've entered all of these in the system. Every time I get the hundred and some requests or whatever, every month at our meetings, when you've got 200 citizens that come there, they fill out these sheets, we put them in there. We put, and I send them back to the people. Isn't that right, Tracy?
Yes.
Marie and Rosa, y'all get them. I sent them back with my own stamps, put them in envelopes, and tell them, I put it in Impact Team, Matt Tonner, his number, or Civil Elamine, or Captain Harvey Powers. I, you know, if it's a police issue, it goes back to them. If it's something that, that we're dealing with, it goes to them with the numbers on here. I even was putting Zane Robertson's number on there.
Again, if you give them to me, I'll make sure they get taken care of.
All right, okay. What about the petition with the, that I gave you about the sidewalks for Wamsley? Remember I gave you petitions that they signed?
The sidewalks for Wamsley will cost $420,000. We are moving to get the design work done, or we will get the design work done, and get those sidewalks put in, in the next sidewalk cycle.
Okay, and then?
Next, next CIP cycle.
And then one more thing, Mr. Marshall. If we could, if we could maybe not make the citizens clean those alleys or clean those ditches when they put their lives in danger, I know, I've walked Wamsley many, many, many days and seen it, and have almost gotten hit, and even, it's, it's not good. It's not good when, when it's a drop-off like that, and then at night when it's pitch dark over there, and then the weeds, but not only there, Chapel Drive, Maguire.
Okay, what, what I need you to do, Councilmember, if you would, is either give me the addresses, or I can have someone sit with you. Where someone has a drainage ditch that is dangerous, that they can't cut because they might get hurt, or if they are elderly, what we can do is, we can get an easement from them, and we could actually take care of the drainage ditch in, in some cases. So, well, Chris can help give actual direction on that, but I know we have some latitude there.
Okay.
I, I just will need the addresses, and we can have DPU go out and take a look at them.
I'll give it all to you, because, like I said, I've got it over here on Pebble Court, Floral, Bed Rock, Evergreen, where they're begging for the trees to be trimmed, and they did petitions too. But I, I appreciate this, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes sir, Mr. Jewell.
The...
No, 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 we've got to put these on.
The problems we're, we're looking at are pretty, pretty, pretty complex. The fact is that, that under Mayor Wilder, we passed an ordinance allowing inmate labor to clean private lots that have grown up and have become blighted, where we pass on the bill for that to the taxpayer that owns the property. The problem is, we had contractors clearing off those lots for profitable work that were cut out with replacement of free inmate labor. It is idiotic to do that, when we've got alleyways that old folk own the property, they can't cut that, that brush back in those alleys. They're responsible for it, all the way out to the middle of the alley and all the way out in front to the middle of the street, but these old folk and disabled people can't do it? That's where you need inmate labor, if anywhere. We got it backwards, and I'm hopeful, and I'm going to see if we can reconsider that, that ordinance, to see if we can turn it back around. All over town, the problem in neighborhoods with debris has to do with alley debris. They can't cut that stuff back. That's the first point. The other is, originally DPW was responsible, of course, for cleaning, cutting all the right-of-way grass, and of course, all the medians. Well, then we put all the parks on the Public Works. Now they got to cut all the parks and the right-of-ways and medians. Now we put all the schools on Public Works. Didn't give them half enough employees to do the work, didn't transfer all the equipment they needed to get it done, and they got behind so bad that you had to pull crews off the road crew to help with the grass-cutting crew. This is idiotic, yet we got an unprecedented $97 million in the rainy day fund because this mayor wants a AAA bond rating. You can't get a AAA bond rating unless we cut this god-awful poverty rate in half, yet there's nothing in the budget to cut the poverty rate, including not giving schools all of their money, which is an anti-poverty measure, including not having employment services in the city of Richmond, which is the best antidote to poverty. We've got things upside down that need to get right-side up, and I'm hopeful that this exercise tonight opens the door for us to get serious about city services, because this report that I just passed out to y'all is, is shameful. This citizen satisfaction report, it's shameful. I know we can do better, we got people who can get it done, but it ain't going to get done doing the same thing we've been doing, I can tell you that. So, I know that neighborhood over there, and I know they've been asking for help for years, and they've been neglected for reasons that might be, might be discernible. I'm going to leave that there, thanks.
Madam Vice President.
Ms. Trammell.
Yes. Mr. Marshall. I need to ask you something. At our precincts, I guess First, Second, Third, and Fourth, please, precincts, we had an environmental officer there, where they would go out and they would see things, or they would come to our meetings, Civic Association meeting, Neighborhood Watch, whatever, they could see and hear from the citizens some of the issues that they had. They took care of them. Is that still going on, or now does it have to come through here, where we have to enter in a 3-1-1 or whatever? Are those environmental officers, police officers, they go out there in the neighborhood and they're able to see things, or on their own, when they, when, when they're out there and they take it upon themselves if they see something that needs to be corrected? Are they still able to do that?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yes.
Can each one of us councilmembers get a report each month on what is being done in our districts, if it's, if it's from an environmental officer, or if it's some of these sheets right here? Because I know in, in the Eighth District, I know there's been thousands of citizens' requests. How can we get that once a month? I'd like to have it, I don't know about my colleagues, but I want to have one.
We can produce a report of the requests that were made and the services that were rendered. So we can tell you how many vacant lots were cited, how many actually were cut, similarly with potholes or graffiti. We, we produce reports like that every month.
I like that.
So if you, if you'd like one, you can have one.
Yes, Mr. Marshall.
Sure.
From street lighting on all the way to everything.
Streetlights, what, the report that we have on streetlights deals with streetlights that were out, where people reported a streetlight was out, and we put a new bulb in it or fix it. It doesn't really speak to new streetlights that are being added. That would, that would be in addition to the report, but we could probably figure out how to do that too. Part of the, the difficulty is, all the lights that people report are not the city of Richmond lights, Richmond's lights, some are Dominion power lights.
And that's what's happening too, Mr. Marshall. When we called, they said, well, what's the pole number? You can't even read the pole number, you can't even find the thing on it, because half of it's gone, and then sometimes if I have a CO, I guess that means for the VEPCO, whatever, or, you know, how, how do we know what to turn in when we call the 3-1-1?
If you just tell us what street is close to, what the cross streets are, or what, what's an address that it's close to, we can figure it out from there.
We started tying yellow ribbon around the poles now.
Well, that, to show them that's the one that you're talking about.
That's what we started doing.
You shouldn't have to do that, but that's helpful.
That's, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, Mr. Crook, may we have approval of minutes?
I need a motion to approve the informal minutes from September 24th and the formal minutes from September 24th. Mr. Samuels, can you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Okay, you're voting on the minutes from September 24th. Mr. Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert.
Aye.
Vice President Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Jewell.
Aye.
Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Ms. Trammell.
Aye.
Mr. Tyler.
Aye.
President Graziano.
Aye.
Those minutes have been approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we're going to have reports and announcements. Mr. Connor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to update on the Hull and Durwin intersection. As you know, last, our last meeting, we had the folks down here talking about their property and the fact that they were trying to get a settlement. Well, I'm, I'm happy to tell you that they're working through that now. Hopefully, this, by next week this time, we'll have it all resolved, and that, that project will go forward. Secondly, Bill Strickland is going to be in town this Thursday and Friday for our Manchester Bidwell program. Bill has got a lot of appointments set up for possible funders for the program that trains kids and also helps workers get trained for actual jobs, people are public assistants. Number three, we have had a difficult time on Daytona Drive cleaning up a dump. You know, this situation's been going on for a long, long time, but anyhow, it's back on track. This, this coming Saturday, the 13th, we will have a crew out there from Renew Richmond. You know, the, the dump has been turned into a community gardens, and we're going to take off with that type of emphasis from this point forward. We also, we had several residents that attended our, our district meetings last time from Worthington Farms, so those folks I'm going to be calling to get them to set up a, an association over there. We, we've not had one, and I think that, that kind of hurts that whole region over there. But anyhow, we're working on it now, and I'm going to be out there Saturday looking at some of those folks. The fourth thing is the James River Branch Trail, that's the, the CSX string of tracks is 2.3 linear miles in South Richmond. The Trust for Public Land is now taking over that project, and they're going to be getting with the people in Jacksonville on the lines to purchase those, and we're in the process of adding that trail into the city's master plan, so I wanted to let you know where that was at. And lastly, we've got our district meeting coming up on the 23rd at 5:00, at 5515 Bryce Lane. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Mr. Samuels.
Thank you, Madam President. Wednesday night, there'll be a community forum at William Fox Elementary School. I encourage everybody in the Second District to come out. This will be for candidates in the Fifth and Second Districts for both City Council and School Board. It should prove to be quite an exciting evening. The next night, you'll probably need this, the food truck, Food Court will be at Hardywood Planks Brewery. Up in the Second District, I encourage everybody to come out and support our local food trucks. The Fan Fall Cleanup, as well as Carver and Jackson Ward, will be on October 13th, basically all day long. Museum District Association on the 15th, Historic Jackson Ward on the 16th. And speaking of October 15th, it's important for two other reasons as well. One, it is the voter registration deadline, as I recall, and it's important that everybody who is not registered that can be, come out. If anybody has any questions on that, don't hesitate to call me, 804-690-0898. And lastly, October 15th will be my seventh wedding anniversary. Krista, I love you, thank you for sticking with me for seven years.
Mr. Hilbert.
Congratulations, Mr. Samuels, that's, that's very nice. The Health Education, excuse me, the Education and Human Services meeting is to be held on October the 17th at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. Our planned discussion items are an overview of park recreation, excuse me, the Department of Parks and Recreation, before and after-school program initiatives. We'll have Dr. Mary Field and the Deputy Director on hand to discuss that. We're also going to go over the open audits that, those items under the Health and Human Services purview that have not been fulfilled to date. We also will be updating on the Richmond Public Schools' computer access and how we can try and get that access to our, our students as quickly and efficiently as possible. And we're also going to hear from the Department of Social Services relative to the vacancy rates in that department, and that's an ongoing agenda item for the committee. We are not having district meetings until November in the Third District, and as a matter of fact, we're probably going to have a meeting in early to mid-December and combine the November and December meetings into one holiday meeting. I've tried to cut back on that, well, I want to have a meeting, but the rules that we have in place for 90-day notices going out from the city, the prohibition for that with the upcoming election, I want to respect that, and we'll, I'm still available by email and by phone, but... And we'll, I'm still available by email and by phone, but want to adhere to the regulations that council put in place. Finally, there is a constitutional amendment on the ballot this November. Have a pending resolution asking that council ask folks to vote no on this constitutional amendment. We heard a report today from the Virginia Municipal League about the unintended consequences of, of this legislation. It only takes a majority of people to pass a constitutional amendment, once it makes it onto the ballot. And I, I think, as I described it this afternoon, it is a, it is a, an answer looking for a, a question and a problem. And I hope that folks will get informed about that and vote no in November. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Mr. Tyler?
I'm gonna pass, Madam President.
All right. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you. Next Thursday, October the 18th, at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we're gonna have our 8th district meeting. We're gonna be at the Satellite Restaurant Lounge, 4000 Block of Jefferson Davis. I believe Kevin, Kevin Irving from Finance will be there, and I believe Mr. James Jackson from Public Works, Director of Public Works, will be there. Also, the Fire Department will be there and the Police Department. So, we encourage all the citizens of the 8th district to please attend. Again, that's next Thursday, October the 18th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This week is Fire Prevention Week. Our President Barack Obama has declared from October the 7th to October the 13th fire safety. We all know that these smoke alarms help save lives. These are our free smoke alarm. And our President of the United States of America, with grant money from the City of Richmond, provides smoke alarms for our residents in the City of Richmond. If you would call 646-1526, 646-1526, those firefighters will come to your house, they will install this for free. It doesn't cost a dime. If it needs a battery, they'll put a battery in it, doesn't cost a dime. All you gotta do, well, you can go to your nearest fire station and ask them to please come to your home and check your smoke alarm. So, please, please call them, because they do save lives. Again, this week, October the 7th to October 13th, President Barack Obama has declared this a Fire Safety Prevention Week. Again, as he said, he encourages everyone to have a working smoke alarm in your home. As the President said, these smoke alarms save your lives. So, please call and get one. That's all, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Dr. Newville?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to just express sincere thanks and appreciation to Sisters Network Richmond Chapter. It is an African-American women's breast cancer survivorship organization, and on Saturday morning, they conducted a door-to-door outreach campaign throughout the Mosby Court community to disseminate information about breast cancer, as well as available resources to be able to access free mammograms and so forth. What they know and that we know is that too many are dying too early and too often from preventable and/or treatable health conditions, and they have as their mission to do something about it. And so, I'm very thankful and appreciative for that effort. I'd like to encourage all Richmond citizens to get registered to vote. We have an upcoming local, state, federal election, and we want to make sure that your voices are heard, and the way to do that is through your vote. And so, if you have not registered, please be in touch with our registrar, 646-5950, and ensure that you can cast your ballot in the upcoming election. And for those who can't register due to criminal backgrounds or offenses, please begin the process to restore your rights. And so, I just strongly encourage us all to get registered and vote. Make sure that your voices are heard in the upcoming elections. There will be no October 7th district meeting. We will resume the 7th district meetings again in November after the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newville. Jewell?
Thank you, Madam President. The, I just wanna say, I want to thank y'all for coming down here tonight. This has been very helpful. Folks hear me fussing a lot. Well, I chair the Government Operations Standing Committee of Council. Our job is to provide oversight in the proper functioning of city government. And when it doesn't work, somebody gotta say it. I've urged this, this, this President, Council President, several times now that, in the past, we, we passed resolutions and even ordinances to force Mayor Wilder to do certain things that this council wanted him to do. And it seems to me that if we have to do that with this administration, then so be it. Whatever is the case, there are too many loose ends out here, there are too many citizens coming before us and making complaints. They can't seem to get much done over the systems that are in place. Tickets that are, that are still open, they show up on the computer as closed, as if the work has been done, and we all know the work hasn't been done. So, we've gotta find better ways to serve people, and, and I'm just hopeful that we'll take that initiative and move forward, and while we work on getting those recommendations from the Auditor's Office completed. So, speaking of which, the Government Operations Standing Committee of Council will meet on the 4th Thursday, that's October 25th, at 5:00, 2nd floor Large Conference Room at 5:00, the 4th Thursday of the month, every month. The public is invited. You are welcome to speak during the public information period of that meeting. If there are pressing items that you have that we need to be aware of, we invite you to come. We need your input from the public. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Ms. Robertson?
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a meeting this Tuesday, October the 9th, at the Benefield Building, which is on Meta Bridge Road, and it's going to be in regards to the traffic commerce that are being placed at, on Meta Bridge. There are three circles, one roundabout, and so, we are asking the residents of the North Highland Park community and any other residents that are interested to attend this meeting on Tuesday afternoon, October the 9th, from 6:00 to 7:30. And the Benefield Building is at 3009 Meta Bridge Road. And you can call to the office and ask to speak with Sabell, and that number is 646-7964, if you'd like additional information in regards to this meeting. We hope that everyone come out. We want to make sure that everybody likes this idea and concept and agree that this will be the effective way to slow down the traffic that's going through the Highland Park community and hopefully help stimulate more retail development along that business quarter. I also have the great honor, thanks to Mr. Hilbert, of informing you that the city's Department of Public Utilities is hosting its annual Senior Weatherization Kit giveaway. That will be this Friday, October the 12th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM, at Pleasant Hardware Store, which is located on Broad Street at 2004 West Broad Street. That's this Friday, October the 12th, from 10:00 to 2:00. Residents 65 and older can drop by and pick up a free box of home weatherization materials, which includes strippings for their windows, socket covers, energy-saving light bulbs, door weather stripping, and draft blockers. You may also have a picture taken with the utility bunny, have it framed up. That'd be a nice Christmas present, probably, to pass on to someone as they enjoy their nice, warm home as a result of the weatherization. So, we want to encourage you to come by. There will also be other service providers that provide services for senior citizens that will be on hand and available to answer other questions that our seniors may have. Friday, October the 12th, at the Pleasant Hardware Store on Broad Street. Also, Madam President, I want to put out a recruitment announcement. We are in the process of putting together a bicycling team in preparation of putting residents on the Cannon Creek Greenway that Mr. Jewell is so fondly proud of, that is the East Coast Connector. And we are recruiting residents to be a part of our Let's Go biking team. We are also in the process of recruiting young and those persons that are more of my age as well, to be a part of a community band that is in the process of being put together that we are hopeful will be ready to entertain the community very shortly. I also just like to echo my other colleague's recommendation as it relates to voter registration. We have a very short window left of October the 15th for everyone that is not registered to get their registration taken care of. For you all that are registered, we ask you to please put your voter registration card in your purse, in your wallet, whatever you take with you all the time, so that when you show up at the polls on November the 6th, that you have your voter registration card or another form of identification with you. But if you have your card, you all should have gotten a new card. Please just put that in a place now, that you know where it is, so that when you get to the polls, there won't be any problems as it relates to you having the proper identification for voting. And I want to make one announcement as it relates to the derelict structure legislation that was before us. I've had a meeting with the attorneys, as well as with the administration and our staff, and discussed the legislation as it is currently presented. We are going to revise that legislation. We plan to continue that legislation for a while. We had a detailed discussion earlier today about blighted properties and the challenge as it relates to legislation. So, I just wanted to put that out, because I know there were several citizens that were very concerned about that and wanted to have a voice as to what we were going to be doing about blighted properties within your neighborhood. So, we'll keep you informed as this makes its way back to the council.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. I have a few announcements. First of all, I want to thank Venture Richmond for the Second Street Festival that was last weekend, and invite everybody to go to the Folk Festival this weekend. The music is great, the food is good, and it's a great way to spend a morning or an afternoon. And I want to thank Venture Richmond for putting that together for us. I also am having my quarterly meeting Tuesday night at 7:00 at St. Luke's. We will discuss the water rates, and also, there will be someone there from Finance to talk about how that operation is moving forward. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that on October 27th, at 9:00 AM, there'll be a budget planning conversation put on by the Mayor's Office. We don't have a location yet, but it's going to be from 9:00 to 12:00, and it'll be the citizens' opportunity to voice what they think are the priorities for the budget, upcoming budget. And so, I hope that people will attend the 4th district or any district and put their input into the budget process. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please read the introduction of the new papers?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You just said that the mayor's gonna have a meeting or not?
He's having the five, they're gonna be five throughout the city.
Five throughout the city?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the one that, that I was approached on is, the date that I got, is October 27th. Now, I don't know if there'll be one closer to you or not, since there're gonna be five throughout the city.
It would be nice if we all knew, so that, so all the citizens in the whole City of Richmond...
You want to give us that schedule? You have it, or can you get it to us?
Madam President, I know that there has been a representative from the Mayor's Office calling to try to...
To schedule them.
...coordinate dates with us for those meetings. I haven't scheduled one.
I know that's, somebody called my office to schedule this.
Is, is all of them gonna be in the mornings, afternoon, nights, or do we know? I'm sorry.
They will...
Madam President...
Perfect person to answer the questions right in front of us.
Madam President, I'm Sharon Judkins. Let me just say, we have now five meetings scheduled. We will have nine. We will get the information sent out to you about the dates, because I don't have them in my head right now, but I'll have that sent to you on tomorrow.
Okay.
And council member, we are asking each council member to tell us the best time and best location for their district, so we'll work with you to find out when is best for you.
And you know what, Mr. Marshall? It would be really, really nice if we could do this after November the 6th.
I'm pretty sure that will happen.
Thank you. How's that sound?
Okay.
Does that sound good?
No problem.
Because I know the number-one thing in our 8th district right now is these blighted properties that they think that they can call me or you and tell us to go out there and tear them down. And I know our Vice President knows that this is not, we cannot go out there and tear down those blighted properties. Neither can the Police Department.
We'll call your office.
Thank you. Call me. 233-7382 is my home. 240-5050 is my cell. Don't call the 516-8067. I'll answer that number.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now, can we have the introduction of the papers?
Yes, Madam President. New legislation for this evening is as follows. Ordinance number 2012-190, to authorize the CAO to accept $28,650 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for the purpose of conducting traffic study initiatives in the city. Council's Public Safety Standing Committee, October 15th. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Ordinance number 2012-191, to authorize the CAO to execute an agreement to sublease between the City Redevelopment and Housing Authority as subleasing, and the city as subleasing for the purpose of providing office space, storage space, and programming space for the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities at 1209 Admiral Street. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 16th. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Ordinance number 2012-192, to amend the city code by adding a new section for the purpose of exempting new businesses that locate within the city from paying business professional and occupational license taxes for the period not to exceed two years. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, October 18th. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Ordinance number 2012-193, to amend ordinance number 2011-170-94, for the purpose of modifying the purposes of which the proceeds of debt issuances authorized by such ordinance may be used to include in making the appropriations to the city's Economic Development Authority, EDA, to be used by the EDA to finance capital expenditures or to make loans or grants to finance capital expenditures for the purpose of promoting economic development. Council's Econo, Council's Finance, Economic, and Development Standing Committee, October 18th. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Ordinance number 2012-194, to authorize the CAO to execute a funding agreement between the city and the school board of the city for the purpose of providing funds for the school board to lease property at 2395 Hermitage Road for usage as a stor, storage facility for various functions located from facilities at the Boulevard. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 16th. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Resolution number 2012-R133, to request the CAO to work with the city council, the Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce, and members of the Richmond community to propose a location for the establishment of a defense, production, and support services zone within the city for a pilot program to assess the potential physical impact, effects, and benefits of establishing defense, production, and support services zones within the city. Council's Finance, Economic Development Standing Committee, October 18th. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Resolution number 2012-R134, to appoint Robert J. Adams as a member of the Affording Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Resolution number 2012-R135, to appoint Regina Shaney as a member of the Affording Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Resolution number 2012-R136, to appoint Lee D. Householder as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Resolution number 2012-R137, to appoint Joyce M. Knight as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Resolution... Resolution number 2012-R138 to appoint Monique S. Johnson as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. And resolution number 2012-R139 to appoint G. Andrew Nay Jr. as a member of the Affording Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Council's public hearing date, October 22nd. Madam President, that is all of the new legislation that I have for this evening.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hilbert is the winner of the Time Study this evening.
The Richmond City Council meeting, about an hour and a half time from the time it got started. It got started a little after, around 6:05. Called order. Then we went through the consent agenda and the agenda review. Consent agenda was approved unanimously. Took about five minutes. Then we got to the longest part of the meeting tonight, the citizens' comment period. Majority of the conversation about concerns about the crime rate going up in the City of Richmond and what is being done. Several interested citizens were down here to speak, and then Chris Spesler of the city told what was being done so far, how they're replacing, improving the lighting, et cetera, clearing alleys, and some of the work that's being done there as well. Got to the council reports and then the introduction of papers, and that's it for tonight. We are looking forward to seeing you again two weeks from tonight. So a fairly short meeting, hour and a half by the time we got started till the time we were done, but sometimes you just don't know how long the meetings will last. Well, we'll look forward to seeing you two weeks from tonight on October 22nd. For Gavel to Gavel, I'm Dick Harmon. Good night.